Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, October 21st, 2024. I apologize for the little delay. We're going to get started with the roll call, please.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabar is absent. Commissioner Jabea is absent. Commissioner Javed is absent. Commissioner Linton.
Here.
Commissioner Maiken is absent. Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Sinigor is absent. Alternate Commissioner Harris is absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell.
Here.
Thank you.
You do have the minutes of the previous meeting. Did we publish the one from last Friday, three Fridays ago?
Sorry, what was your question?
The minutes of the last meeting. I do have the October 4th.
They should be, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that every one of you has received a copy. I would entertain a motion to accept and/or have your comments.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 4th, and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. We're going to go to the case PG 2024-281, please.
Good afternoon. Richard Faust of Faust Engineering and Surveying requests approval of a waiver to the sidewalk requirements for a new commercial development at 6510 Calder Avenue. Section 26.03.004, Part III of the city's ordinances grants the Planning Commission the authority to review these requests, given the applicant can prove there is an engineering reason to not install a sidewalk. The applicant provided the following engineering reasons, first being the placement of the sidewalk will require the ditch to be partially backfilled, reducing the capacity of the ditch; second being construction will endanger the underground utility and communication lines within the construction area; and third, placing an underground storm sewer would not be practical due to the lack of depth of availability in the ditch and downstream elevations. Engineering reviewed and concurred with the assessment provided by Mr. Faust, and as such, planning staff recommends approval of the request. The area outlined in red is the subject property. They wish to have a waiver to the sidewalk requirement along Calder Avenue. And this is the site plan. Subject property. South one Calder. And that's it, and we do have the applicant present.
And I don't believe there is sidewalk on either side of that property, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Faust? Good afternoon, sir. Mr. Faust, you analyzed the existing ditch, and it is your opinion that a sidewalk would not be safe or feasible?
Yes.
All right, and you looked at the utilities, and the sidewalk might be a danger to the utilities if you put culverts in there, right?
It's not the sidewalk, this section is construction.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for the gentleman?
Yeah, did you get a cost estimate? All right.
Good answer, Mr. Faust. See, he's done this once or twice before.
I'm satisfied.
All right. Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Faust.
Thank you.
Great, we have PG 2024-281. We have heard from the city and also the applicant, and the city has recommended approval, and I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve PG 2024-281 with the three conditions.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. This concludes our regular meeting of the Planning Commission. We're going to wait for the other gentleman to show up so we can start our combined meeting.
Okay, now where is our...
Thank you, Richard. Great, we do have a quorum, and I would ask the Honorable Mayor to get us started.
Welcome, everybody.
Mayor West. Mayor Potem Neeld is absent. Councilmember Durio is absent. Councilmember Phil Shaw. Councilmember Getz. Councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Turner is absent.
Thank you, Mayor West. We're going to get started with the PG 2024-271, please.
Rodney Davis of Dustin Developments requests approval of a specific use permit to allow a duplex at 3375 Avenue C. This will be a new construction. The developer intends to rent the units. Parking will be provided within the garages and driveways of each unit. The intent of the project is to expand housing options to the community and promote infill development of vacant properties. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. And number three, a four-foot sidewalk shall be installed along the front property line of budding Avenue C in a manner approved by the city's Public Works Department. Staff did send out 30 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review for a duplex. This is an aerial image of the property. This is subject property and east. To the north. To the south. And to the west. This is a little bit of a lopsided picture. There was individuals sitting in the chairs, so didn't want to broadcast them on the PowerPoint. But it does appear to be a duplexes. There are two addresses associated with it. I believe that we have the applicant present.
Good afternoon, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Rodney Davis for Dustin Developments, 4990 Suite Number One, Beaumont, Texas.
All right, sir, go ahead. No, I should...
I'm sorry. Rodney Davis with Dustin Developments. Address is 4990, Suite Number One, Beaumont, Texas.
And Mr. Davis, do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Yes, sir. What I did was I brought a picture. I've built this duplex before within the residential area to show that it fit comfortably on the same exact size lot in between the homes. There was just parking provided for them and also garages. There's no congestion on the street or anything like that. We had no problems so far. They already backed around the corner about another version of the same exact duplex to give people opportunity to be able to rent a brand-new establishment.
Are you familiar with the three conditions that the city has imposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you intend to comply with all of them, right?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Any questions for the gentleman? Nope, okay. Well, thank you very much. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant. He does understand the three conditions by the city, and I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval with three conditions. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Again, good luck, sir. Now we'll go to PG 2024-276.
Christopher Vargas requests a specific use permit to keep a second dwelling unit on the property located at 8590 Umpel Road. The property is located within the residential single-family dwelling district, and as such, a second dwelling unit requires approval of a specific use permit. Mr. Vargas is seeking approval of the second dwelling to begin the process to come into compliance with city ordinances. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, the building shall be serviced by the same water meter as the main building and shall not have an individual water meter. Number two, the contractor shall apply for all applicable building permits and complete all required and necessary inspections. Number three, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. Staff sent 11 property owner notices. We did receive four in opposition and zero in favor. Opposition states, "Single-family residences do not need to make exceptions." On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. And I know it doesn't show that, but real quick on this, to the east, that's South Major, just to give an idea of where this is at. This is an aerial image of the property. Subject property. Subject property continued. To the north. To the south. To the east. And to the west. And I don't believe that the applicant is present.
Can you go back to the picture with the pool? Is that the detached piece we're talking about?
I'll have Elena... She was out there taking the pictures. I'll have my planner one speak on that.
So, there's actually another building behind this that's completely shielded by the bushes. You can't actually see it from a right-of-way. However, he's trying to connect the two buildings, and the back building, he's wanting to convert into a restroom and shower. It's a Morgan eight-by-eight building, and that's what brought the attention to the property, is others had seen people coming and going. So, the front building here is what he's eventually going to try to convert into a residence with the back building being attached to it to create a restroom.
So, this picture that I'm looking at, is this the real... Is the main house, or is it just...
No, sir.
That's not the main house.
No, sir.
Another existing detached structure.
Yes, sir.
So, we're talking about a third?
There's a third building on this property behind that structure, yes, sir.
And it's a Morgan building?
It's a wooden building, but same design concept, eight-by-eight.
Is on the skid?
Yes, sir.
How do you make that win, Star? I'm not sure.
Well, and I think that's where that third condition, "Construction plan shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements", is going to come into play and be important.
And then we have nine neighbors that didn't like it?
Four.
Four. Okay. And the gentleman's not here.
He's not.
Any comments from anybody here?
I'm looking at the building, I guess it's either with a garage shed or whatever, and they're converting this to a livable unit. And the portable building behind it is an eight-by-eight to be used for a restroom, which also would have to be plumbed also. Okay, I have the same question. How is it going to pass Winston?
Right, and that's where they would have to construct it in such a way that, you know, if there's a breezeway or anything like that, it's going to have to comply with building codes.
Missy, can you just confirm for the record that the property or the applicant was invited to attend in the method that was used?
He was, he was invited. We've communicated via email. We've also delivered it through the mail of the applicant packet, including the notice of the hearing.
Well, there are a number of questions to ask somebody, so I'm not sure how... I wouldn't feel comfortable with blindly just recommending it. So, that's my opinion.
So, the applicant's... Excuse me, the applicant is not aware of the conditions?
The applicant was sent this packet, and correct me if he's contacted you since we've sent the packet, but he has had this delivered to him to review. They also... It's highly encouraged that they come to these public hearings. We communicate it via email, oftentimes telephone, over-the-counter conversations at second floor, including sending these, you know, in the mail or email.
And there was no comment about the conditions at all?
None.
All right.
And you communicated personally with him at your office, right? Okay, all right, so there's no misunderstanding about being here?
No, sir. Whenever we accept their application, we go through a detailed process, and even when we explain the application, there's a detailed explanation of the deadlines, meeting dates, what happens post the meeting. It was probably a 45-minute conversation at the counter with him.
Okay, all right. All right, folks, is there a motion?
I move that we deny this permit for PG 2024-276.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and any discussion? Mr. Beatty, are you okay?
Could we have tabled this? Just asking.
The building's not going to change. He might be here answering questions, but I have no... The building's not going to change. The conditions of the building are... There is a third building, and it's an eight-by-eight Morgan building, they say.
Typically, items are tabled at the request of the applicant if they reach out to the department to say that they're not going to attend. We typically don't table items for no-shows. So, there are several items, as you can tell, were tabled either by the request of the property owner for other reasons, but it's never been the practice of this commission to table items because the individual wasn't here, unless they contacted in advance prior to the meeting to say that there was an emergency as to why they couldn't attend.
And we don't know why they couldn't attend at this point.
Staff didn't receive any correspondence.
Okay.
All right, folks, so we have a motion and a second, and we had our discussion. All in favor say aye. Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Let's go to PG 2024-286.
Dolores D. Chavez of D. Richard Real Estate Investments requests approval of a rezoning from RMH Residential Multi-Family Highest Density to GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling, or a more restrictive zoning district, to the two lots located just south of 3250 South 11th Street. The purpose of this request is to open commercial development opportunities to this site. This property is located within the conservation revitalization area of our city's comprehensive plan, which encourages immediate action to prevent continued deterioration and decline of businesses within the area. The rezoning appears... Or the rezoning request appears to align with the comprehensive plan as it would foster continued growth of commercial businesses along 11th Street. Additionally, the property fronts an arterial roadway, which typically encourages and supports higher-density uses. Staff recommends approval of the request. We sent out 15 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition, and we just were submitted this one, where it's essentially not sure at this point, but is concerned of the intended use. I do believe that we have the applicant present that can speak a bit more of the intended use, but on your screen, the area outlined in red is the area under review. So, as you can see, to the north and to the east is all bordered with GCMD along South 11th Street. So, they're trying to mirror that same structure or that same zoning pattern on the opposite side. This is the aerial image. This is the subject property. To the north. To the south. East. And west. And we do have the applicant present.
Good. Good afternoon, ma'am.
You are the famous D. Chavez, right? Well, I am D. Richard Chavez.
Well, it's great to have met you in person, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is D. Richard Chavez, 8220 Stacy here in Beaumont, and it's a pleasure being here today. Thanks for having me.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Would you have any additional information that you would like to give us?
No, but there is a correction. I listened to the young lady give the overall description of the property, and she said two lots. There are four lots. There are four lots there.
Four lots that you're going to make into...
Into a commercial development.
I'm sorry, if I could clear that up. On JCAD, they outline the parcels. It is four lots in total, but they out... Essentially, it comes in two tax bills. That's my mistake. It is four lots.
Good, thank you. And what is the intended use, ma'am?
At this time, I don't have one, but I've had quite a few people ask about that particular location and whether or not it was commercial. The best use right now for that particular location is commercial. It would blend in with the other properties that front South 11th. And at this time, I don't have anything concrete. I'm working on something, but nothing concrete.
I saw equipment in the picture clearing the lots, so I thought maybe you already have a plan.
No, it's in process on ground. But we did have that cleared. It's .64 acres of an acre, and it has been completely cleared. And I did not use any of the city facilities to get rid of, you know, the trees or any of the debris. We had a professional come in and completely do the job of clearing it and hauling off all of the debris. And I would appreciate an approval.
Okay. Just as curiosity, where did they take the trees?
They hauled them off.
Well, you paid the taxes. You're more than welcome to use the stuff, right?
Well, they did an excellent job, and I felt like it would look better and for whatever commercial use, just go ahead and clear it completely. And so, that's what we did.
Good, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the lady? Thank you.
Thank you.
Heard from the staff and also the applicant. The use is not known at this time, and I would look for a motion.
Move for approval.
I think we need to open up the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. We had one negative comment, I believe you said. Let's go to the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this case? Ma'am, I'm really sorry that I have forgotten. Please, come forward, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
If you would state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Georgia Heiser.
Ms. Heiser, thank you. We'd love to hear from you.
I received this notice, and we did see that the property was cleared, and it is, you know, the vision to the other side. The trees are cleared, and it looks really nice. My concern is that, since I've been in this, my property is the one directly behind that.
Ms. Heiser, can you give the property address for that property, please?
My property?
Yes, ma'am, just for the record.
3598 West Moreland.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I've had a challenge with the city raising... digging the ditch to where the water from the adjoining street on Waverly and West Moreland doesn't fall into my yard. I've made some corrections to that. I've elevated my land to where my driveway and my side driveway to the property does not retain as much water, but the ditch still retains water if there's a big rain. My concern, and currently, since the property has been cleared, it's even lower than my property. So, if there's any rain, that water is going to fall back into my yard. I've added on to my property, front and back, and I intend to continue to improve my property, but I can't do so if I'm going to be damaged. And I have added an additional structure. If you show the south, that other building, that new building, is my building. That's a very expensive building. The carport, I added that on to my house for my convenience. Where that white truck is, I elevated all of that land up to the light, up to the fence. And all of that still, to a certain degree, if you look at the amount, the depth of the ditch, still gets under my fence. That's my concern. Because since all of that trees and dirt has been moved, that property, if it does rain, it's going to flow into my yard. I've asked the city to deepen the ditch. They tell me this is all... I had to widen my driveway even to get that new as much water as it goes through there now. So, I'm still having the same challenge. My concern is that if any improvements are done for commercial reasons, this resident will have negative reactions to that improvement.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. From what I know about the new construction, city ordinance would not allow drainage from one property to the other one, so you should be safe in that respect when they go to get a permit. But we will make a note, and the city engineering's here, right? There you go. Would you please make sure that you pay attention to this when it comes to you, because she's worried about potential flooding of her property? All right, thank you.
One other thing, if you don't mind?
Not at all.
That would be from Waverly. What about up to West Moreland? Because that would only cover the drainage from one street, not the street behind it, is my concern. My property, at this very moment, this is the first time I've ever seen it clean. I've been there more than six years. And so, having this amount of clarity to have it visibly and aesthetically for me and all of the other neighbors has never been done. Even the property next to it, across the street, it's horrible. I've asked the city and whichever department that is to clean the lot across the street. Nothing's been done. And my yard stays up to par for the neighborhood. So, I mean...
Well, we have one good thing after another, so we'll take turns. Thank you, ma'am.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, I... Sorry, I almost forgot about you.
Okay.
Great, we've heard from, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Ma'am, you had the, the neighbor that is worried about drainage, would you address that, please?
Yes. I'm sorry you're having that problem. We've only owned this property for about two and a half years now. And, and I thought by clearing it, it would make it, you know, nice. And it seems like your problem is not my problem completely. It seems like those ditches from, all the way from St. James, all the way back, need to be deepened. That, you know, when it rains, you know, the water has nowhere to go. So, that's basically the real problem here.
But you also do understand that your property cannot drain into?
Yes.
Adjacent neighbors? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Now, you're saying it cannot drain now or when it's developed?
When it's developed.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? No more volunteers, so we're gonna close the public hearing. We heard from the staff, there's also the applicant and the neighbor, and I entertain the motion.
Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you, folks. Thank you for indulging us in the delay. I would ask the mayor to send us home.